Let the guiding light stream forth within the minds of men. From the point of love, let the hearts of all be filled. Let purpose guide the wills of men. Let power restore the plan that all may benefit from. Amen.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney Hawthorne.
Here.
President, your honor.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the folks from the Neighborhood Advisory Committee and the students from the eighth grade class that are going to give us a presentation tonight. Betsy Sherman Saunders is here from the chamber. She's on that committee and she's going to introduce the program.
Good evening, mayor, council members, Fulton community. My name is Betsy Sherman Saunders and I'm the vice president of the Neighborhood Advisory Council. The Neighborhood Advisory Council is an organization that has existed for over six years now and what we focus on are different partnerships in creating projects that will build and enhance the Fulton community. One of our latest projects was designed by and created by eighth grade students. We're in the very beginning processes of this. This is by no means close to completion right now. We have two students here today and this was unveiled at the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce's annual meeting two weeks ago. It's my honor to introduce you Kathy O'Brien, who is the assistant principal of the Fulton Junior High and she's going to be introducing the project. Kathy?
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you again for inviting us this evening and I hope that you enjoy the presentation. Before we begin, I would like to sincerely thank the members of the Fulton Chamber of Commerce and the Neighborhood Advisory Council for the generation of this project and support throughout it till now. Most especially, I want to thank Betsy Sherman Saunders and Jeff Hodge. Where's Jeff? Jeff's over there from the Neighborhood Advisory Council for their leadership and support. They have in a way become a part of our school community. I feel like we're almost family in a way. I hope that our school will become even more of a part of the community with this project, so I thank you. I would also like to thank the students that are here tonight and the teacher that has really helped us with this, Mr. Brown. Thank you for really working very hard with the PowerPoint presentations that we have put together. He's spent countless hours with the students on working on this and without him it would not be possible and he's truly appreciated. Lastly, I want to introduce to you Hillary Marks and Joe Clark, two of our eighth graders. And unfortunately Liz Beasley could not be here tonight because she is sick and Hillary is kind of, and Joe has taken over with her part of it, so without these two students truly, they represent what I feel the school and the community would want from them. Leadership, commitment and talent and humor, which they have a lot of, and I really thank them too. So without further ado, we'll start and I will turn it over to Hillary.
This year, the Greater Fulton Neighborhood Advisory Council and the eighth grade students at Fulton Junior High School teamed up to improve Fulton's future, show things we are proud of, identify community improvements and get the community involved in making Fulton a better place to live, work and play. The eighth graders became involved because we're at an ideal age where we are still objective in our opinions. We are becoming aware of how important it is to be involved within the community and this is a good place to start so that five years from now, when we are high school seniors, we can see our vision become a reality. Through doing this project, I personally have realized that even being as young as I am, that I can still be involved and help to make a difference within my community. Mrs. O'Brien?
The Fulton School District has written performance standards for its students in eighth grade. The standard most important for this project is individual and civic responsibility. We expect our eighth graders to contribute to the community by giving of their talents and skills that will benefit our society and promote responsible behavior. Our eighth graders have, because of this project, been involved in several activities. An election was held for the slogan that would capture the theme of this project, which you will see later after this project we'll unveil. Also, they have analyzed issues that face the community by taking photos throughout the community that they were proud and sorry of, which you will also see in this presentation. And hopefully, they take pride in our school and our community from this project. Back to Hillary.
Today, we are introducing to you our school's vision and hope for this community. Our slogan is, "Dream, Believe, Succeed: Make Fulton's Future a Reality." This slogan states that you must dream to believe and if you believe, you can succeed. And together, we can make Fulton's future a reality.
In order to select a project and come up with ways to improve the community, we went through a process of collecting information that included writing letters to editors of the Fulton Patriot and the Valley News, interviews with community members, taking photos of prouds, and sorries of Fulton, and the selection of photos for a PowerPoint presentation. This process helped us learn more about the community. It was probably the first time most students my age have been asked to do something for our community. My favorite part was the development of a PowerPoint presentation. This presentation, which was put together by seven students under the leadership of Mr. Brown, shows where we think our community is going.
in focus groups to select a community project that would make a difference in Fulton. There were fifteen focus groups that were held over three days. We selected projects based on the level of impact and the degree of difficulty. We selected five projects and as a class voted on one to focus on. Number five, promoting the community. We need to promote Fulton as a place to live, work and do business. Number four, improve roads and sidewalks. These roads and sidewalks are unsafe. We need to reinvest in our community. Number three, lake and nature trail. Our lake is beautiful. If we add a nature trail, more people will enjoy its beauty. Number two, neighborhood cleanup. Some of our homes are run down and give Fulton a bad appearance. We need to point out and repair those homes. And number one, parks and recreation improvement. Is this a safe place for children to play or eat? No, it is unattractive and we think it should be cleaned up.
What's next? Neighborhood Advisory Council felt Fulton needed to be improved. They involved the Fulton Junior High School staff who agreed with NAC. They believed it should have been the eighth graders who improved Fulton. We, the eighth graders, thought that projects were the only way to get our points across. Finally, the eighth graders needed to get the community active. We need your help to make our dreams become reality. Before we get our plan into action, we need volunteers, fundraising, task force membership and community support. And so, like our slogan says, we have to dream before we can succeed, but in order to make it a reality, we need you, the community, to help.
I'd like to thank the eighth grade students and I know they have a special presentation right now that Arby's has and the students have to give to Arby's. As they stated, this is just the beginning. This is just the start of a project they want to work on, they want to be involved in. This is something that they know there's a lot of work involved with. They have to do fundraising and grant writing, but they also need community support, community help, and this is a great partnership between our community, our education system and our business community. And it'd be great to get as many people on board with this as we possibly can. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Hodge.
Thank you. As you can imagine, we are going to need a lot of community support. One of those will come in terms of fundraising and we've been fortunate that many businesses have already jumped on board and helped the kids with some of the costs of this project and in preparation for future costs. Our largest sponsor to date, and we would like to honor them today, is Arby's, which has come on board with a $500 donation. And we would like to present this banner to Dave Lattalian, the manager of Arby's, to put in the store. This is, "Arby's Supports the Junior High and NAC. Dream, Believe, Succeed: Make Fulton's Future a Reality." And I'd like to turn this over to Dave Lattalian from Arby's, who has a presentation for the mayor.
I'm not a very good public speaker.
Really, all's I'd like to say is I'm proud to be a part of this and the main reason I'm proud to be a part of this is because I myself have children who live in this town and attend the school here. And all the stuff that they just presented is a lot of reality and it's so true and it really, Fulton really is a great place, I think. That's really all I have to say.
Mayor, if I could just steal one more minute, I told the mayor I was going to keep him here till 11:00 and I scared him. Now he's thinking I'm serious. We have some yellow cards up here that are signup sheets for anyone who's interested in getting involved in any way, whether it means you just want to stay informed on what's going on or if you want to become a volunteer or if you'd like to be part of the fundraising, anything of that nature. Please come up and take a couple of sheets if you'd like. They're right here at the front. Thank you very much. And thank you, council and mayor, for allowing us this time tonight.
Well, you're entirely welcome, Betsy. I would like to thank the NAC and the administration and the staff at the junior high school and especially the students. I was privileged to be part of some of the interviews with the eighth grade class and I found that to be very interesting and very rewarding. And they asked some very good questions. They're definitely thinking all the time. And I am so proud to see them wanting to get involved in making our city a better place to live. Because if the students can think about it, it's going to help. Because this isn't just an adult problem. We need help from students and business and residents. Everyone working together is how we're going to make this a better place to live. And I thank you very much for all the work that you're doing.
Resolve that Chapter 165 of the city code is hereby amended as follows. Subsection 16552, Schedule 8, stop intersections. Add, stop sign on Corporal Barrett Drive, direction north at intersection of West Broadway. Stop sign on West Seventh Street, south on West Broadway. Subsection 16553, Schedule 9, yield intersections. Delete yield sign on West Seventh Street, south at the intersection of West Broadway.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that Chapter 165, subsection 16550, Schedule 6, of the vehicle and traffic coordinates of the city of Fulton entitled, "Prohibited turns at intersections," be amended to read as follows. Add, name of street, Wendy's Northwest Parking Lot Exit. Direction of travel north, prohibited turn left. All hours onto Route 3.
Motion?
I'll make the motion. Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
If I could, mayor, I'd just like to add something to this new regulation. Mr. and Mrs. Michael Lichidello with Patrick Circle were involved in an accident a short time ago at that point of entry onto Broadway. And with their suggestion, I brought it to the council's advisement and a traffic study was done and Sergeant Monchek agreed that this was a situation that was unsafe and he gave our, a recommendation to us that we pass this resolution that no left turn out of Wendy's onto Broadway. So that's the background.
Thank you. Next item.
Resolve that minutes of the council meeting held on January 16, 2001 are hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February 20th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers relative to a proposed local law which would amend subsection 152-k of the Fulton City Charter entitled, "Demolition."
Mr. Hawthorne, do you want to speak on this?
Yes, your honor, this came from, as you know, we have potential demolition or hopefully demolition coming up soon. Talking to the Bureau Chief of Public Department about that as well as demolition in general, we realized that our law is a little vague as to what kind of restrictions can be put on a demolition permit. And we felt that certainly there should be an ability to put a duration on there, which is the first item that we request. And secondly, that in some circumstances, the Bureau Chief should be able to require a performance bond so that if a demolition is not finished, that the city could have hoped it on in order to get the demolition finished. So that's, those are the two items we propose changing the whole law.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February 20th, 7:00 PM relative to proposed zone change request from C-1 Commercial to C-2 Commercial for the property located at South Seventh Street and Oneida Street.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll offer that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that city chamberlains hereby authorized and directed to transfer $8,970 from the A-1990 contingent account into the police department account for the purchase of a new copier in Fulton Police Department. Said cost is to be charged as follows. $7,654 from contingent to A-3120.2105 and $1,360 from A-1990 to A-3120.4557 maintenance account.
I have a little bit of background on this. The copier that is now down in the police department was purchased, used from the Chamber of Commerce back when they were still up in the building at Seal Right. So it was well-used when we got it and it's got a lot of miles on it and they just can't keep it running anymore. So that is the reason for this. It's finally given up the ghost. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Res, the Fulton Community Development Agency has required the former Oak Street School for the purpose of conversion to housing for lower-income senior citizens. Res, the CDA has, after public notice and competition, selected Edgemere Development Incorporated of Rochester, New York, to redevelop the Oak Street property. Res, redevelopment will be financed with both public funds and private investment, including low-interest loans and tax credits to be secured from New York State through a competitive process. Res, Article 11 of the New York State Private Housing Finance Law enables local jurisdictions to grant real property tax abatement to such housing projects. Res, a real property tax abatement will enhance both the project's competitiveness and its long-term viability by permitting rents to be maintained at affordable levels. Now therefore be it resolved to approve a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Oak Street Senior Housing Project. Set agreement to run for a term of 20 years or so long as the project shall remain affordable to lower-income seniors, whichever is less. And be it further resolved that the payments under such agreement are as attached.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the DOT-Oneida Drug Testing Agreement between the city of Fulton and AL Lee Memorial Hospital.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll offer that. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Res, that, whereas the zone change request submitted by Mr. Francis Marbeto for a change of zone from C-1 Commercial to C-2 Commercial for his property located at 1013 Emory Street and a portion of his property located at 1019 Emory Street with approximately 100-foot of frontage on the 1019 Emory Street parcel. Said parcels to be incorporated into one parcel and that the zoning of the entire parcel be changed from C-1 to C-2 Commercial be referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for their recommendation.
Motion?
I'll offer that. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Res, a city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for seal bids in his office, the Fulton Municipal Building, February 6th up to 2:00 PM and publicly opened at 2:15 PM in the council chambers located on the second floor for elevator renovations in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department. Res, the city clerk opened the bid and read them and allowed as follows. One bid being the Thyssen-Dover Elevator, $32,643. Now therefore be it resolved that the bid of Dover Elevator in the amount of $32,643 is hereby accepted and awarded to Dover Elevator in the amount of $32,643, subject to the final review by the city attorney and the engineering department.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item. Will we move to the discussion section?
Yes.
The last meeting when Mr. Jack Cooper was here in regards to a property tax issue. Is Mr. Cooper here tonight?
Not seen.
He's not here tonight.
Was he notified to be here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he knew. He knew it was happening the next time the council meeting.
Yeah, he was told we were here to be discussed this meeting.
Right.
I don't see him. I don't see him. Do you have any information on this, Alderman Lincoln?
Well, you know, I kinda went over with him what we had discussed with the council, and I told him that it probably wasn't gonna fly, that it wasn't something we wanted to get into because it would open up what I would consider a Pandora's Box. And he understood.
Can we speak on this at all?
No.
Okay. Since he's not here, does anyone care to enter a motion to waive the fees and penalties on his taxes?
Nope.
Hearing none, I think this case is closed. Does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council? Do any of the Aldermen have any business to bring before the council?
Of course I do. We know about this. First of all, I want to also extend my congratulations to the young people, the eighth graders, and all their teachers, and all their support staff. The mayor, myself, and John Crook saw the presentation at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, but once again, I was enraptured in watching it, and the wheels are turning, and we certainly know the things that we've started. Many of the things that were discussed in the presentation are already in place. We certainly intend to work on all those things. Everything takes time. As was mentioned, it's gonna be a cooperative effort between everyone to make these things happen. So certainly, I support your position and what you want to do, and we certainly, I'm sure everyone up here is going to work extra hard to make your dreams come true. A couple of other things that I have. Not that I've got an audience tonight or anything, but the council knows that I usually have something to say anyways. New York State recognizes outstanding scholar athletes, and the Recreation Committee would like to recognize seven of our high school teams that have achieved a 90 academic average. And as recognized before by New York State, they are the girls tennis team, the golf team, the boys cross-country, girls gymnastics, swimming, boys soccer, and girls soccer. So as any high school student knows, to participate in athletics and still maintain those kind of averages, because these are all 90 and above, so they certainly deserve our recognition and congratulations. Second item. Once again, the Community Task Force did an excellent job in presenting Snow Sculpture 2001. The Community Task Force is an outstanding group of individuals that consist of school personnel, people from churches, community groups, the mayor's on that committee. It's a committee that has really brought the community together, and it's got a purpose to prove, and they focus on respect and all the good things that we all want to have happen. So I know the sculptures were great. There were 13 teams this year. I think there were five last year. Our own City Hall team came in second. It was a very cold day. The wind off the lake was fierce, but those people stayed down there on the lake for six, seven hours and made some beautiful sculptures. I went down there Sunday and Monday, and people were still driving by to see them, based on the reports that were in the newspaper, to see what the sculptures looked like. They were outstanding. Everybody did an outstanding job. Of course, the rains came Tuesday, so some of the sculptures changed. But also, we want to thank Commissioner Graham and the DPW crew for the work that they did down there. They made all the snow happen. Well, they didn't make it happen, but they pushed it around. Now, the third thing that I want to discuss is the council has had a historic building survey that they had in the newspaper. The council was interested in hearing from the public, was interested in some of the ideas and suggestions, and I certainly want to thank all the people that sent those responses to us. I will read some of them. They're short, just to get an idea of what the attitudes were. First one, I've got emails and I've got letters. "I am writing to you to express my opinion on preserving historic buildings. When the KFC was demolished, it left us with a hole and a parking lot. As a child growing up, I remember the building and attended many functions there. The entire street was lined with many stately houses, the KFC being one of them. Now it is gone. Next to be torn down is the Case Home or the Elks Club Building. The home has historic significance. There are more historic homes than Fulton. Are we going to let all of our history be torn down? We keep tearing them down one at a time. It is as if we have torn out the very soul of our community. I believe that the first step should be to pass legislation that protects and enhances our historic sites. Do we care enough of all of Fulton to preserve our history for future generations? I hope so. Thank you for giving me the opinion to express my opinion." Opportunity. Excuse me. I've got some pluses and some minuses, and I think it's important that we...
Can you say who that last writer was?
No, I think probably most people... I don't know. I think sometimes I'll preserve the anonymous... Okay, here's another one. "It's important to save our historic buildings for future generations." Of course we should. We need to make a list of these properties and preserve them all. They are our history and our children's. We need to know about our past, and for our children and their children, et cetera. There are many ways to build funds on your own, especially with the outcry of many people who care about our past history of Fulton. And of course, there are also some people that do not necessarily have the same opinion. Historic. The Elks Building is only one of many ugly old buildings in Fulton. It'll only be a bottomless pit for money to try to keep in repair. Why do you think the Elks wanted to get rid of it? How long has the Elks Building been for sale? When did talk of historic preservation of this body begin? Building? Afterwards known, there was a potential buyer who would demolish it and use the land to build a vested business? Question mark. City budgeted funds should be only for buildings that can be preserved and represent a benefit to the community. Example: community buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Thanks." So I thank all the people that responded to the survey. Especially, I want to make a note also that the mayor has inquired into ordinances. He's talked to the Historic Foundation of Oswego County. Alderman Sherman wrote a letter to Assemblywoman Sullivan, and she responded to his interest in the possibilities of passing ordinances and preserving our historic buildings. So maybe Mr. Sherman wants to comment on that also.
One of the things that she said in her letter is that there is money available for people that do have historic homes. It would really be in the Elks' interest to possibly make those contacts themselves to possibly get funding. There probably would be funding available to them to do their own work on their building. So it's really... I mean to get a copy to them also. I have not carbon copied them yet, but it would be in their best interest to at least look into it, because they may not have to move. They may be able to stay right where they are, and with those funds, you know, keep the building intact, and actually probably make improvements inside of it, too.
I think also Alderman Sherman has indicated, as chairman of the Legislative Committee, that he intends to look into any ordinances that we might be able to pass that is going to preserve our historic buildings.
I have been watching some of the letters in the paper, and I think it was Janet Harder had written that some communities designate certain buildings and then work at it from there. So I don't know if we can go ahead and pinpoint particular buildings in the community and then have approval from those owners. It's just more of looking into what we can do as a community to try to preserve some of the older buildings. I do have some background in it. My background is architectural. I used to work for an architectural firm that used... They did a lot of renovation work on historic properties. We were working on the Almyra City Hall, which was a renovation project for the city down there. Almyra was very big into historic preservation projects, so I do have a background in it. And it's something I would like to see happen here in Fulton, too. It really does help preserve the economics, especially when it comes down to real estate in the community when something like this happens.
I have some information that I'll pass on to you in regards to those sample ordinances.
Okay. Done.
That's it?
Yeah, that's enough. That's enough.
Well, I always have to follow Alderman Weston.
I appreciate that.
I can't let him get away with it.
I appreciate that.
I just simply want to commend and thank the young gentlemen and ladies from the junior high, what a job well done, and also their advisors. You certainly cast a good guiding light upon us, and as Alderman Weston mentioned, some of these things are already been in place and are being developed. So thank you very much.
Yeah, they're doing a very good job here, Your Honor. Keep it up.
Okay.
I yield to the left side of the room.
Uh, yeah. Actually, the kids coming here tonight reminded me of something. It's been winter time. You don't notice the neighborhoods quite as much. I'm all looking at how the streets are getting plowed and the intersections and things like that, but we have several places, abandoned buildings in my area. And I'm gonna ask you again, David, are we ready to take some of them? It's been going on for two or three years.
We need to abstract and tell you the first order goes in September for about three dozen properties.
Okay.
So far, I've got about 24 of them. And we're gonna, because of the New Year's come, we're gonna go back and take the 97s also on the list of those from the Chamberlain's Office. I anticipate probably will be finally before April 1st, which ends June, July 1st.
Okay. That'll give us time, yeah.
Just a few months later.
Now, we talk about preserving historic buildings. That is a problem. We have a balance problem, because a lot of the buildings that we have in the neighborhoods, you know, like, there's just no fixed home. So they have to come down, and if the lots are big enough, we're trying through the Community Development Agency is building new homes, single-family homes. But also, in this list that I have, for a while, the tax redemption was two years, and then it got changed to five, so we've been chasing them. You understand? In other words, we had some abandoned ones that probably should've come down four or five years ago, but when we just got ready to take them, then the council went from a two-year tax redemption to a five-year tax redemption to mirror the county. So we'll put them out another three years. And they're tough. They're fire or an accident waiting to happen. Also, we have one that has been on the back burner for a long time, and it's 417 Seneca. The Community Development Agency has leaned on that house. It's been vacant for almost six years, and it's split between them and Social Services. And it's even worse when the government agency owns one of the places that light the neighborhoods. We need to do something with that. And, you know, because the kids get in it, they've knocked their windows out, so we know they've been upstairs. John Crook and I were in it two years ago. That one, I think, could be saved, Your Honor. The family was moved out of it because of lead contamination in the pipes and in the paint. But there's a situation where we own it. I mean, and we're not really doing too much with it. There's actually, in that area, there's four of them, in that one block area. And I think the one I seen on the presentation the kids did is on Sawyer Street, and that one's, I think there's been at least one fire in there. And so, keep up the good work. I think you might know how I feel. You know, I might want to talk to you and get involved with you and show you how government works, and sometimes it's a lot slower than we'd like, but we really are trying. And it's sad that when you know that the children are noticing it, but it's good, too. You know what I mean? So you did a very good job, and we're all very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn to executive session in regards to contract negotiations and proposed property acquisition.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.